Says traffic in the south.
What's he doing?
Yeah.
How you doing?
I know you have to know.
I live on the middle side.
Right.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
You know, traffic, uh, just very much.
Right.
All right.
You find me a conflict?
I'll try.
I'm trying to use.
Can I have Marcia come on up here?
Let's go.
Yeah.
Good one?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. One of those that are down.
I can catch two.
Yeah.
Dan, you want to pray for tonight?
Uh, okay.
Mr. Carpenter, are we ready?
Yes, sir.
If y'all would please stand with me as we say the pledge and have an invocation.
My pledge will be to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Father, Lord, we thank you for this day and all your many blessings. We thank you for each one who's here. We thank you, Lord, for our county and we ask now that as we conduct its business that you help us, Lord, to do it in a manner that's in the best interest of our people and that you help us do it fairly and honestly, Lord. May I ask these things in Jesus' name? Amen.
Amen. We'll go ahead and open the meeting. Um, first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at them?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second. Discussion. All of them ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Two seconds of that.
Is that a click?
Yeah, is it non quicker?
I need it anyway. Quicks here. Is it quicker?
Yeah.
Yes.
She want to hear you guys.
I know. Um, as far as announcements, just real quick, I'd like to remind everybody if you haven't done so already, please silence your cell phones or turn them off where you can minimize disruptions. We got a lot to get done tonight. Also, um, we encourage everybody to participate in the meetings. If you have something to say, there will certainly be a time for you to do that. However, we ask that you try to limit your comments to three minutes. That way, everybody has a chance to get up there and have their say and we can move on with business. Uh, Mr. Carpenter?
Uh, yes, sir. First item on our agenda tonight is a review of the US 331 corridor plan. Uh, Kristin and her team have worked very hard on this and I'll turn it over to her to present it.
Okay. While she's getting that going, I'll kind of explain the timeline to you. We, um, we basically need to kind of get this wrapped up this month because of the constraints of the grant. And, um, we're working with Matrix to do that. We've had some good input from the county's grant person and from other departments and we're trying to integrate that in there. But we also, I think, need to talk about policy and that's what I want to kind of get some discussion from you tonight on and I'm gonna kind of lay out a framework and hopefully, um, we'll have some good discussion. Okay. Um, we've talked about this project a little bit before. Um, it's proactive project and it really, I think, seeks to sort of establish a vision for the area moving forward, which, you know, when you, we say that, we don't really understand that, but that's actually a big deal. And, um, I might be talking to you about that a little bit. So our, our goals, and I've added one down here, is also we want to support the grant applications that the county is doing with Restore and, you know, the projects that the county's identified. So we want to make sure that this project, you know, helps us get where we want to go. And, um, so I've added that and we've added some sections in there in support of that based on some input. Okay. So, I'm sorry that's hard to read. What were kind of the challenges that we had in thinking about this plan? And one of the main ones is you have a low density and low intensity, um, existing future land use pattern out there. So kind of what's on the ground may not be in support of urban infrastructure. And we know we need urban infrastructure. We know that sewer is highly desirable because of environmental reasons, because of the bay, um, and, and just in support of economic development. We know we need that and we want that. And so you need to have sort of a land pattern that, and entitlement pattern that supports urban infrastructure. Um, we know that we need to think about maintaining the capacity and the speed of the road. Also, urban infrastructure that's there now. A lot of money went into the road, a lot of planning and design and construction. So we want to make sure that that maintains as a tourism corridor, a high-speed corridor, and a high-capacity corridor for hurricane evacuation. Um, as I talked about the vision a little bit before. What other people have said too throughout the process is that we want to see more housing that is affordable, that is for workforce. Um, so I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about how I think you get that. And then we, um, know that everybody has said that there's a huge desire for not just economic growth, but economic development in its truest sense where we're getting the type of jobs that, um, we desire long-term. Uh, we know that growth is gonna happen. It's a kind of a function of population and, um, the built-out nature of South Walton. So you know that you're gonna get some growth up there really no matter what. We're already starting to see that. But how do we facilitate that real economic development? Those jobs that are meaningful, that are going to build community, that are going to keep our children here? Um, that is kind of one of the big challenges that we were looking at. Um, people have talked about things like I'd like to see service road, you know? Well, that's a nice thing. That's a really nice thing. But how do we get nice things? Um, that's where the hard part comes in is how do you get those nice things? And how do you get affordable housing if you go on? You know, there are all types of housing out there. There's not just one type of housing. I believe that because of just macroeconomics and kind of what's going on in the country with baby boomers and with millennials and just kind of what's going on in general in Walton County in terms of our market, in that land area, especially in North Bay, the value that's there, probably the only way that we will get true workforce housing is to promote a mixture of housing types. Um, you know, we've got a single-family subdivision going up there right now that's fairly dense. It's a small lot development, but those houses are in the four hundred, three, high three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar range. Uh, workforce housing for us is around one ninety now. So how do you get the market to deliver that? Probably here because of what we've got going on, it's really going to be in this mixture of housing types. Um, so we have to think about that as being a sort of reality. Um, what assets do we have? A lot. And, um, we are blessed with, um, I think tremendous opportunity. We are a fast-growing county. We know that. We've heard the statistics. We have a really world-renowned tradition of new urbanism in South Walton and I don't exaggerate that. Those communities have changed other cities and town, and, uh, developments in this entire country and in the world. Um, what got started here with Seaside, and this is not an exaggeration, um, has changed reality and economic situations in, in the entire world. And, and, and that is a tremendous asset. Um, we're known for that. We have that marketing potential. We have that established. Uh, we got a big project coming in. Whether some people might think it's assets, some people might not think it's an asset, but it is an asset in terms of the people that it will bring. Those people buy things, they make purchases, they support ancillary commercial development. Um, we've got large conservation holdings and I'm gonna show you a map of that in a minute out here in the corridor. Now, what that does is it establishes really a small growth vector. And what does that mean? Values. So, um, what, the area that's out there that is poised for growth or that is developable is not that huge. Um, so it really matters what we do. It really does. That is probably our high-value area. Um, that is our next growth vector and it's, it's, it's probably not as big as most people would think. We have a new road. We have numerous economic development incentives that the county's already doing. The, the work the EDA is doing with the industrial park, different things are going on, what's happening in Mossy Head. Um, there's also a big tax incentive area in Defuni Act that's been established. So there's a lot kind of going on there that can continue to grow and, and be part of this as well. We have tremendous funding potential. We have probably better funding potential than I've ever seen. We have the Restore projects. We have the TIF. Um, and, you know, if values increase in the area, that will start to yield some money to put into infrastructure. So we've already talked about this, the current future land use map. Just in this, this study area is the TIF and I, we're really looking more broadly, uh, and we can go on, but we know that it's a, a low-density, low-intensity pattern at this point. Can you be quiet? I was gonna tell him to do it. So, um, here's my five-minute speech and I, I won't make it very long, but I'm gonna make you all planner, honorary planner. Great, great plans are about the management of change. So we know that change is coming. A great plan, this will be a great plan if it does a good job at managing that change in the way that is the most beneficial to the county and to the people that live here. Um, great, great plans promote quality growth. And what, what does that mean? That's one of those planner terms, quality growth. It means, uh, growth that responds to the changing market. I've already talked to you a little bit about what we know is in demand. We know people like walkable, livable communities. They get big money. Uh, those are the places that people like to live. We know the millennials and the aging population are looking for, you know, that type of development. They're looking for, uh, you know, the market changes and, and you have to be able to respond to that. Um, a great, uh, quality growth uses government resources efficiently. It, uh, creates long-term value. So, you know, you may get economic growth in the short term, like a Waffle House and a different that, and all these things that pop up along the corridor, that growth. But is that long-term economic value? And then I think great plans promote livability and sort of a quality of life. And I think that's what makes people want to be in an area. That's what gives you that sort of emotional feeling about an area that attracts you to it and makes you want to stay and make it your home or bring your business. So we came up with sort of this activity center concept and we're, we're kind of sticking with this, but we're go, we're recommending to expand that, the center, the activity center south to take in the lands that are not in conservation, conservation holdings, um, there near thirty-two eighty. The north activity center, I think, is gonna have a different set of recommendations and a different character, um, depending on what you tell me and what the policy direction is, but I, I see sort of a, a different, um, outcome there, just, you know, looking clear, future-oriented. Okay. So we had some land use recommendations, um, and we talked about this before and I think everybody's kind of in agreement that, um, we can make these activity centers a special area plan and that will eliminate state-level review of land use changes. So that shorts the timeframe. It doesn't eliminate public hearing. Uh, that still has to be adopted by ordinance, still has to be, um, to the Board of County Commissioners and to you for two public hearings. So, but it does eliminate some time. Okay. Um, these are the, the conservation land holdings. I, I just kind of wanted to, I don't know if anybody's ever seen everything mapped and this really isn't all of it because down just north of the West Bay Sector Plan, in between that blue and the West Bay Sector Plan is also a large conservation swath. So, um, up there in the corner, the blue that's surrounded by red, that's where Owl's Head is. So you can, you can see that, you know, kind of the busy area is Freeport, you know, where you see a lot of parcelization. You can see that kind of narrow swath or growth vector that's through there and how important it is what we do there. So here is, um, this, I hate to keep throwing them under the bus, but this is Highway eighty-five in Crestview. Um, now if you look, you see I-ten and then you see a, a strip commercial pattern basically leading into the city. And look behind that, there's like a pod of residential development. And then looking further behind that to your east, there is a school. These things don't really go together. They don't play together. They're, they're separated. This is, this is what we call the opposite of mixed use. Um, this is, uh, a suburban development pattern, but the result has been not really so affordable housing and a congested roadway because you have just driveway cut after driveway cut after driveway cut, um, coming into the city there. In the next slide, and a lot of people have talked to me a lot about Southwood in Tallahassee, which is kind of funny to me because that's a project that I spent five years of my life working on. Um, and at the time when we were doing Southwood, it got so much criticism. People just hated it to death, um, because it was what they called kind of pseudo-urbanism. It didn't quite get to that full mixed-use, um, development pattern, but it is better than the eighty-seven model for the road. Um, or eighty-five, I keep calling it eighty-seven because I'm used to Santa Rosa, but, um, i- if you look in this development pattern, there's a service road to the south. There's four main, or three main entrances into the development. The uses are mixed, kind of down in the bottom there where you see that U-shape, that's the town center. It's not on the road, but it's the town center. Um, there's actually restaurants and different things in there, but they do have some commercial on the road. You know, it's not to say that your, your, your road is not gonna be commercial because that's not really true, but you may not have as many driveways as you would in the eighty-seven example. Um, so, yeah, so a, a little bit different development pattern. They do have a mixture of housing types there. They do have, um, an affordable housing requirement that was part of that development. And, um, you know, this was intentional though. So whatever way the county decides to go, um, I think at this point it, it is intentional. If you decide to, you know, we're going to, you know, incentivize all development, I'm gonna talk about how we can incentivize development in a minute. Um, go, go one more slide. This is kind of what we have to offer, uh, the county right now. We have a fast-track permit process that we can offer. Um, that's gonna take staff and that's gonna take some doing. I mean, that's not gonna be something that just happens. Um, we can eliminate and reduce impact fees. We have fairly substantial impact fees if the development provides, let's say the development has a park that's internal to the development and it's open to the public, maybe they don't need to pay a recreation fee. Or if the development has a certain mixture of uses that takes trips that would normally be up and down the road and keeps them internally, maybe they don't need the transportation fee. That's something to think about. Um, we can leverage, you know, a special planning area where they don't have to have state-level review. We also have a huge density bonus program in our comp plan that is currently unworkable. It's in, currently in our code. It doesn't get used. And that's probably a good thing that's never gotten used in South Walton because that would have freaked people out because it really allows a lot of density. I personally think it probably didn't get used because of complexity and also because of the height limit. In North Walton, you don't have the same height limit. So it is possible to rework that system to give somebody some density incentive to do that mix, how, mixture of housing types here, uh, but we need to, we need to look at it and see, you know, what we have. So we have those things that we can offer. The question is, do you want to throw that in any development? Do you want to throw that in a certain development type? What is it that we would be looking for in terms of big picture envision out there in the corridor that we would want to leverage these things? We are thinking about installing sewer. Uh, that's obviously a county priority. It's well-stated that, that, you know, that's above my pay grade, but they're all working towards some kind of global solution there, I'm told. So, um, you know, that's a, a nice thing to have, um, for a developer because normally they have to do those things without us. So, um, these are some of the other economic development recommendations that we've already talked about. Uh, corridor preservation, we've already talked about how we can do some of that. So you could, you know, there, the, the options I think before you tonight as a policymaking body are to decide, A, what, if any, type of development we would like to incentivize? Or B, do you want to just incentivize any growth? You know, there's that option. The other option is, um, kind of, um, you know, more of a regulatory approach, I like to call it, where you just manage access, you know, and you, you worry mainly about the road and you kind of aren't really offering that incentive package. But think about, you know, kind of what, what is it that, that we want? Do we want to attract businesses and different things that would bring value to the county? And then how do you do that? And I, um, I say this a lot and, you know, you can take it for what it is, but what I have seen happen in my twenty years of doing this is that the Wild, Wild West approach does not yield, um, value.
What you mean by that, Kristin, I think is doing nothing and just let whatever happens happen?
Yes. You're gonna get growth and I think that's gonna happen regardless of any of this that we do. I think just a function, you're gonna get that. Um, failing to plan or control or to make that growth what you want to see, I think you're gonna get greater value, but are you going to get that real value that everybody keeps telling me they want? Um, and, you know, people, developers especially, making a large investment in an area, you kind of need to know what is the outcome of that area gonna be? Am I making a good, you know, am I spending this money wisely coming in here? Is, is this going to be something that the community shepherds and, and facilitates and make sure that I get a return? Or is this just kind of an open deal? And I think we've seen some of that happen to an extent with Owl's Head now where we have the D.A.R. Horton sale. So a lot to think about and kind of what I want from you tonight is to think about those three options and let me know what your thoughts are.
Is there any scenic highway language or recommendations involved in this corridor?
I, if, I'm kind of waiting to see what you say about the other stuff, um, but I will tell you that if you decide to incentivize a certain type of development, um, you know, mixed-use development or development that is more of the Southwood model, um, you probably need to, at least from Owl's Head South, consider some of that. Maybe not all of it like we have on ninety-eight, but some of it.
When would that be added? I mean, when would you consider that?
Yeah, that would have to come back as, you know, all of this, at this point is, I'm kind of looking at it as, hey, if we get sewer, look at what we can do. So, you know, if that happens and, you know, we begin to implement this plan, at that point, we would need to start putting those pieces together.
But I, I mean, I'm kind of favorite wishing modifications.
What does, um, Freeport, Eglin, and Defuni Act say about all this?
Eglin has been a, a, a critical partner in Freeport and Defuni Act both have been at our working group meetings. Um, you know, we are talking about county land regulations, so, you know, there's that. Um, we, Eglin, uh, is concerned about the north area. Uh, will tell you that they have some restrictions there that they would like to see us implement.
Well, so that was, that, that would be a concern to me because you don't want to do something that's going to harm that mission.
That's right. Yes. And, and the board, when we talked about this in their policy workshop, I mean, I think the clear direction to me was that, as well, that we need to preserve the mission of Eglin.
What kind of things would they be concerned about? Have they voiced that?
Yes. They, they don't want to see a lot of high-density or higher-density residential. Uh, there's a safety issue with the things that they are doing there and they do not want, um, heights in excess of seventy-five feet. And they also have some lighting concerns. They don't want like football field lighting, uh, you know, um, and those things are enumerated in the small area study that was done in, I believe, twenty-twelve.
Well, so is that the entire length of the corridor, three thirty-one on the lower end, or is that a specific area?
No, it's kind of a swath and I had a map of it. It, it's kind of a, a flight corridor, but it does stretch out over that TIF coming up into Defuni Act.
Okay. So what would some be some of the uses that they would approve of?
Commercial, industrial. Um, they've said that industrial would be a great, uh, idea there, so, and, you know, there's that tax incentive area north of Defuni Act, so that may kind of work out in a, in a good way. I, I, you know, I don't know. Um, that's, that's something.
So I would think that when you're talking about mixed use and use higher-density residential development, it's more closer to, to Freeport.
Yeah.
The lower end of three thirty-one.
It's really the, I'm calling it North Bay.
Right.
And actually, I think that name is being used in marketing already.
Okay.
Um, it, which is a good thing. Uh, it, that area, North Bay, is where we're talking about this type of development incentivization.
I'd be careful because the Seminole area is also referred to as North Bay.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, I haven't looked at the master site file, but, um, you know, we have, yeah, there's quite a bit of conservation lands out there, so hopefully.
The, uh, putting in like the service roads, when, when do we, when does that become part of the discussion? Because that's gonna, that's gonna be crucial to keeping that corridor where you can...
I think that it's gonna be hard to get, that's one of those things that I call the nice things. It's gonna be hard to get that if the development isn't yielding a certain value. Um, it's hard to make like a Waffle Shop put in a, a service road. So, um, it really depends on kind of what you decide, big picture. Um, I think that if you decide to leverage as best we can and, you know, see what happens over the next few years. If it doesn't, uh, seem like it's gonna work out, then, you know, you can always reevaluate, but, you know, that's, that's, you gotta, I, I, those, those types of things are hard to get if you're not having a big kind of development coming in, a big, um...
But, I mean, this is, seeing to me like this would be the time to, to implement those strategies because it's sort of a blank slate. It's a blank canvas. So if you, but once you start allowing this piecemeal, you know, the, the Waffle House, whatever.
Yeah, you can't. And you know, there's that tax incentive area north of Defuniac, so that may kind of work out in a, in a good way. I, I, you know, I don't know. Um, that's, that's something.
So I would think that when you're talking about mixed use and use higher density residential development, it's more closer to, to Freeport.
Yeah.
The lower end of three thirty-one.
I'm calling it North Bay.
Right, okay.
And actually, I think that name is being used in marketing already.
Okay.
Um, it, which is a good thing. Uh, it, that area, North Bay, is where we're talking about this type of development incentivization.
I'd be careful because the Seminole area is also referred to as North Bay.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, I haven't looked at the master sci file, but um, you know, we have, yeah, there's quite a bit of conservation lands out there, so hopefully.
The uh, putting in like the service roads, when, when do we, when does that become part of the discussion? Because that's gonna, that's gonna be crucial to keeping that corridor where you can.
I think that it's gonna be hard to get, that's one of those things that I call the nice things. It's gonna be hard to get that if the development isn't yielding a certain value. Um, it's hard to make like a waffle shot put in a, a service road. So um, it really depends on kind of what you decide big picture. Um, I think that if you decide to leverage as best we can and, you know. See what happens over the next few years. If it doesn't uh seem like it's gonna work out, then, you know, you can always reevaluate. But, you know, that's, that's, you gotta, I, I, those, those types of things are hard to get if you're not having a big kind of development coming in, a big um.
But maybe, I mean, this is, seeing to me like this would be the time to, to implement those strategies. Because it's sort of a blank slate. It's a blank canvas. So if you, but once you start allowing this piecemeal, you know, the, the waffle house.
Yeah, you can't, with that pattern, you can't um do that, absolutely.
So we need to, it would seem to me we need to do that on the front end. So that we don't mess it up in perpetuity like we have places in South End.
I think if you're gonna target a certain type of development, today's the time to do that, not next year. Because next year you're gonna have, look what Danny said, next year you're gonna have other things that have popped up and once it starts, you can't stop it. Um, I think it's important that the county identify where it is. You want these mixed use developments. And I think the North Bay area that you talk about is obviously where you want to start because that's where it's going to start.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that you have to put stuff in place to, you know, to guide that development and to give. Um, county staff, developers, an idea of what's expected. I don't think you can delay that.
Well, we, and another thing we need to. See, another thing that we need to start figuring in the plan from the very beginning is uh to make sure we have some east-west connectors. Like between old three thirty-one and new three, you know, go ahead and figure out where we're gonna put those. So that we can build those developments around those. Because right now, there's only one way to get east and west and that's basically old three thirty-one.
One way to do that is to encourage um traditional development, which has more grid pattern. Um, you know, that, I mean, that can be part of, you know, if, if you say you want to go one way, that you incentivize that type of development. Um, you know, o- other than, you know, public. Uh, sort of expenditure, that the way that, that I know to do that is through saying we want this type of development.
Uh, I, I think there is gonna be some public mu- expenditures. I mean, it's gonna have to be at some point. As far as the roads and the sewer and.
Yeah, and that's the good thing about, you know, the TIF and however they decide to use that, you know, I don't really know. That won't be for me to decide. But um, you know, that is there and established, which is uh so fantastic. I mean, you hardly ever, you know, it's almost like a, a, it's just somebody gave us a gift.
Well, Chris, what are you looking for from us tonight as far as guidance?
Just um, if you could, you know, kind of pick a direction for me, um, or, you know.
I would like to see personally, I'd like to see the county plan what's gonna happen along three thirty-one instead of just letting things happen. I think we have to target how we want it to grow. That way, I mean, and it's not say, I mean, like you said, you have to have housing, you have to have housing for all income levels. Because the people that work down here on the south end can't afford to buy down here on the south end. And I think it's unreasonable to expect them to have to drive to Mossy Head or Darlington to try to find a house and then drive an hour and a half to work every day. So I think planning those things and targeting that type of development where you can mix those uses. I think today is the time to do that. Like Danny said, you can't wait until something happens and then try to go back because you can't ever go back. I think going forward, we have to start looking, you know, what does, what do we want three thirty-one to look like twenty years from now, twenty-five years from now? Because the only way we're gonna get there is to start today.
I know up in, in like Enterprise and uh, uh, you know, some of those places. You can see where the, like the service roads and even if they're stubbed off right now, you, you have a, and, and their plan is that they're gonna have. Service roads around their circle, which is a, a, so what I would suggest is, because I'm not a planner and I don't, but you are. So I would suggest you tell us the perfect, the perfect scenario, the, what you would recommend as a, the, the best way to go. And I think because it's so, it's such a blank canvas right now, we, we can do that. We can do the best way. But if, if we start letting them piecemeal it out, we're gonna blow our chance. And this is the one chance we got for this corridor. And once we start letting them screw it up, you know, it's done. So I would suggest you and Mike and, you know, the staff, tell us about service roads, what you would say is the best thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I honestly don't think you're gonna get the nice things that you say you want unless you.
Plan for it.
Target in, in, a certain type of development. You know, uh, your suburban pattern like eighty-five in Crescu is not gonna ever yield that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and once that is established, it's like the chairman said, it's, that's, it's very hard to um.
Well, anybody that's been on eighty-five at five o'clock in the afternoon don't want no part of that.
Yeah.
So.
Kristen, do you, this is just a question, but do you consult like where to put some civic like, like fire department? Police department, where they gonna put some facilities that they could or should, you know, have a, you know, do y'all do that too when y'all, in this plan? Because I, I'm sure there's gonna be a case where you're gonna need a fire station.
We, we, we do not, I mean, some planning departments do, that's very much part of a package. If you're trying to target an area for economic growth and, or economic development is to establish a capital improvements plan.
You weigh that out too in this plan?
It can be done and, you know, with the TIF and different things, but that's a political decision that I can't make. But I mean, obviously, those things are part of the incentive package.
Right.
So I think it's, I think going along with that, I think it's important that you do that. And you say, if you're gonna do this type of development, it's gonna be this big, there's gonna be a requirement that. I say go as far as say, you're gonna be required to put in public parkland, give kids a place to play. We need a place that we can build a fire station when that becomes necessary.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you build that into the model that you're doing. And as long as you do that upfront, these developers know, we have to plan for this. I think one of the biggest things we've not planned for is parking.
You can, I cannot overstate how huge schools are.
Hmm?
Um, and, yes, I mean, that will make or break an area.
Yep.
Yeah, but do you want schools along three thirty-one?
No. But that can be built off the road.
And you also have to consider the amount of wetlands that are gonna be down through there too, because there's a lot of that in those areas. So there's not as much usable property as we may think when just looking at these vacant properties.
Well, the, the other gift we have, you didn't really list, but we have time. I mean, it's not like we have to do this tomorrow.
That's right.
We can, we can afford.
Get this plan done tomorrow, but.
But, I mean, but we can afford to step back and do it right.
Yes.
There's no.
Yes, yes.
It's not like we're an economically poor county that we need the extra tax money. We can afford to do this correct.
And we can, once we establish sort of that overarching vision, the devil's always in the details. So that's gonna be taking place over the next year or so, you know, really hammering that out. I mean, I think at this point, you're just really at ten thousand feet, big picture direction.
But if you stay at ten thousand feet for too long, things are gonna start happening and you're gonna miss it.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I mean, that's, that's.
You definitely want to be in front of the sewer.
Right, right.
And the sewer is coming. I mean, one way or the other, it's gotta happen, so. Um, we need to, as Mr. Stewart said, we need to, we need to get our plan in order. So that when the, the developers start knocking on your door, we, we can tell them this is what we want. And if we don't get this, we're willing to wait for somebody else.
And we, this plan actually will become a marketing tool. Um, it, it, when it's published and the investment community can see that we've sort of established. What we would like to maintain in the area, um, you'd be surprised what that does.
And there's a lot of people I, I would hope or think that, that want to be a part of something that's, that's first class, that's high end, that's, that brings value. They don't just want to throw up some junk. So I think there's people who are gonna do good.
And we, we try to have that, working for us now. I mean, we have that and, and, and it's, that is a huge um.
How, how far out do y'all plan? I mean, how many years?
Honestly, um, really good plans, you're looking at thirty to fifty years.
Because the reason I'm asking that is, is I think where the strategic planning issue should be. Is you need highway twenty-four lane from Freeport to Ebro to connect to airport.
Yes, yeah, and we have that in here.
And that should be part of this.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, you see what's happening in Panama City right now with all the aerospace industries coming in.
Yes.
And, and I, you know, obviously that's not something's gonna happen tomorrow, but I think that should be out there.
I think twenty is hugely critical. I think you are exactly right, yes. So, but when we do this plan, the good thing about it is we can use this to influence infrastructure decisions.
You know, with that in mind, we even put in a dust, dustel park in Freeport. You know, so, I mean, that's, that's just kind of my, just some ideas and thought, bits of thought.
Yeah, there's a big one there.
There's one there.
We're thinking about expanding.
Yeah, maybe, you could really put one place for that.
Well, I, I just, if you're looking for guidance from us or suggestions from us, I think what I'm hearing is that. What you've described you would like to see is what's being talked about we'd like to see. I mean, I think we have to, we have to plan for the future. We, Walton County has to be the driving force behind what happens on three thirty-one. And if we want it to be a first class or a great entry point into Walton County, we have to make it that. We can't sit back and wait for someone else to do it. But I tell you that, like Danny said, and I'll say, and I think everybody else will say, we don't know what that is. Uh, and I know you don't want to hear us tell you to bring something to us to let us look at it, but that's really how it has to be.
Yeah, well, we.
You're the one with the experience in it.
These ideas that everybody has, you know, the service roads and these, and the, the housing and all that, really. That's what guided me in terms of making the recommendation because you're telling me what you want and I can tell you, well, the only way I know how to get there. Is this way and we can move forward under that.
I think the, the last, the last thing we want is to have a stoplight every hundred feet on three thirty-one. That defeats the purpose. So, so service roads are the only way I know of to fix that. And, and we've got, I mean, we gotta maintain the, the ability to run up and down that.
That's all we have.
In fact, I, I think there's already too many stoplights on that side.
Now, so do you need a motion or anything from us or just the discussion and guidance?
No, I think, um, you know, just if you want to, um, maybe for the grant, just say, um. You know, kind of sum up the, the direction here and, and for inclusion into the final plan. And recommend that we go ahead and um send that recommendation to the county commission on the thirtieth.
Okay, so what does that motion need to say?
Um, what I'm hearing you say is that you would like to incentivize a certain development type. And that we want to have managed growth and try to accomplish these big picture vision things that we've laid out are important to this community. And um include that in this recommendation package and move forward.
Is there somebody who can make a motion?
Let me give a stab at it. And then you, you help me. We want, uh, we want to incentivize, uh. Gr- uh, what was the word? The, the development.
Quality.
Quality development. We want to incentivize uh and plan for our service connector roads. We want um to uh encourage a plan that has commercial and industrial along the Eglin, along the areas of Eglin's concern. And more residential on the south side.
Residential.
Um, and uh, and look for a first class, high-end development.
What about workforce, or?
Workforce.
Mixture of housing types.
A mi- mixture of housing types.
Yeah.
So we can, so we can sustain a workforce and, and encourage some of the workers in South Walton to live in our, in this area.
Plan for all services needed.
And, and plan, uh, and in, in the plan, we want to encourage uh the municipal and governmental services. That uh such a development requires such as firehouses, schools.
Parks.
Parks, recreational activities, police stations. Anybody else?
We have a second to that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Peggy. Any discussion?
I have, yeah, I have one question. Besides the incent- incentivizing.
Got that.
Besides incentivizing these types of developments, are you planning to do anything else like maybe zoning or land use changes or anything like that?
Right now, this is talking about an incentive package only, not a regulatory package. Um, you know, I say try that, see what happens, um, before you go making people. Um, we, we'll see, you know, we may have changed course, uh, but, you know, it's worked in other places.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any other discussions? Go ahead.
Don't go anywhere, Kristen.
We want to incentivize quality development, incentivize service connector roads. And we want to encourage a plan along the areas of Eglin's concerns on residential issues. Look for first class, high-end development, mixture of housing types. And in the plan, we want to encourage the municipal and government such as schools, parks, recreation activities, and civic needs such as fire stations, et cetera. Is that it?
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on that? CNN will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'm sorry, I need a second.
It was about four.
Everybody goes, so you can take your pick.
He wants a second, but.
Everybody.
Oh, everybody did?
Well, you can, you can, I mean.
It was a unanimous second.
Heidi, go ahead because I have to go get my kids. We have the same little thing this week. So we got a couple of code amendments and I'm gonna kick you off and I may have to leave and uh let uh Mac and we have code enforcement staff here as well. So they can answer questions that you may have. Um, the first, um, and you may have noticed there's a numbering error. Uh, I actually fixed that, but I guess I didn't save it right. So you got the, there are two chapter sevens, but that's not right. We know that. Um, so chapter six is signed scenic corridor and vista overlay districts. And that's just a different term, but we, um, the scenic corridors, we, because we have zoning now, we have zoning map. We wanted to put those in a, a zoning framework, so they are overlay districts to the official zoning map. And the kind of the policy setup in here that those things are to be consistent with the conference of plan, land and development code. But they establish regulations that are above and beyond. So staff knows that everything applies that's in the current code and comp plan unless this si- overlay district tells you something different. Or has a greater requirement. Um, so we, we reorganized, we put everything in the same place. Uh, in terms of signs, and then I'm, I hate to have to even talk about this, but uh we did need to make some changes. Relative to a Supreme Court case, uh Reed versus Town of Gilbert, where we made sure that we don't regulate any sign based on content. We can regulate kind of where the sign is, how it looks, how big it is, those things. But we can't distinguish among signs based on what they say. It, that's become a freedom of speech issue. Uh, there was a Supreme Court case ruling, so we need to make sure. Um, that if you have a non-commercial speech, so that means political signs, whatever kind of sign you have that has non-commercial speech on it. They have to be treated the same. So you can't call out political signs and, and not say that other signs that have non-commercial speech on them. Um, have a different standard. So there are some changes in here related to that.
How about commercial speech?
The, the court case, and we got Heather here, a month ago lawyer, but in all the analysis I have received of that. Is that you can treat, as long as you treat all commercial and all non-commercial speech in the same way, that you can make that distinction. Um, so we added some additional things to the list of prohibited signs. And this was really Matrix's uh, uh. and this was really Matrix's, uh, uh, recommendation, and I think they make sense, like you don't wanna sign on top of a roof. Yeah, anybody seen goats on the roof?
Goats?
Yeah, that's, that's outside of, in Alabama. There's a, there's a tourist place, and they have goats on the roof, anyway. Um-
What was that advertised?
Yeah, so, we really don't want much of that. Um, abandoned signs, you know, we kind of strengthened the language a little bit, like if, you know, you have the old junkie sign on your property, and you just leave it there, you know, that probably needs to be removed, if, especially if the business is no longer there, hadn't been there for years. Um, so, uh, code enforcement had mentioned to me some issues with sandwich board signs, uh, especially on thirty-eight. And we didn't really have any language related to those, and I took a stab at some language, but I'm going to tell you that I think it needs to be workshopped. I think we need to work through that a little bit more.
Where's that at, Kristen?
Yeah, it's in, um, six point oh five oh seven. Um, I went down the corridor, and, uh, we have some photos that code enforcement took to show me too, and I noticed that a lot of the buil- businesses are using those for, like, permanent advertising, because they don't have any other identification of where they are at sort, in a shopping center, say, um, they're not really being used in the traditional sense, like, you know, outside of my door, I'm advertising happy hour, four to six, you know, on my chalkboard sign, yeah. So we, I think, the language that's in here is related to that traditional sense, being the only thing that's allowed. And that may not be okay, so I, I wanna spend some time with the community on that, and I'm not really sure right now. And it, and that may get bogged down, and we may have to just not do it right now. Um, I think that's really the most substantive stuff that's in here. Oh, there is a design standard that's new, uh, that Matrix suggested, and that would be really to, for all signs in the county, for those to be related and designed to the architecture of the main building. Uh, you know, yeah.
Explain that.
Well, let's say, um, you know, I have a, you know, you, you want your sign to be sort of compatible or kind of, most of the time they do this already, because it helps you understand that that is the building that this sign is advertising. You know, but sometimes they don't. Sometimes you have a, something that's flashy or neon or different, you know, really different than, than the building, and so they did, and that's up for debate if you want to look at that. That's six point oh eight oh two. And I'm totally fine with you guys tabling all of this until September. If you wanna spend some time with it, 'cause you got it late, uh, that's fine, too.
In this whole section?
All, any or all of these chapters, except for neighborhood plans, I kinda like to move on without them, 'cause we didn't really change anything in there. Um, scenic corridors, there are some recommendations included in here that the zoning, I mean, the design review board made, and they agreed on these changes, and so I went ahead and incorporated those in here. Most of them are just clarifying, like they're adding some materials to update material list based on what people use, uh, in current practice. But, uh, one of them is worth mentioning, that is the change related to light color. Um, they have recommended that we look at regulating light in the scenic corridor by Kelvins, which is a measure of sort of color, like if you have a higher number, you have more of a uh, blue light, and then, or the lower the number, the more brown and yellowish it gets, or amber. Yeah, I think about good lighting. You know, we all look better in good lighting. It's, 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 you know, it's that, and buildings and foliage also look better in a, a better quality color light. Now, that would increase the cost of development in scenic corridor.
Hmm.
Yeah, that, that's in there, um.
What's the stormwater discharge strike through? That whole thing's struck, or is it?
That got moved to code enforcement.
Okay, moved to code.
Yeah, so that got moved to code enforcement, and so did the only parts of the other chapter that had the fees in there got moved to code enfor- 'cause that chapter was just weird. I don't even know what that was. Um, so, uh, on thirty-eight scenic corridor, we are making some clarifying languages, uh, language changes to the text related to the buffer. And I've talked, um, with the development review board about this and to other interested parties. I think what we've had happen there is that that language was so hard to understand, that it was like impossible to implement, and we've kind of cleaned that up a little bit, uh, to be sure that what's intended is a landscape buffer, and if you have native community in there, in that buffer, you have to preserve that, but it, and it's part of your landscaping. I don't think it was ever intended to be, whatever's in there has to be totally natural.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think what's happened is-
So native weeds don't count?
Yes, to give all that, you know, so that, I think encourages people to just put a big driveway across there, 'cause who wants to look at that overgrown, you know, whatever. So, we've cleaned that up, and we've also, we wanna make sure that we enforce the driveway separation standard on thirty-eight. Uh, so we've cleaned that up, and, you know, we've added some specific language, you know, if you can't meet that fif- the fifty foot's been in there, it's in there. If you can't meet that, here's the things you need to do, and one of those, maybe you need to reduce your driveway width. 'Cause I think when you read that original language, what was intended was that you have this nice green buffer, and you have an entry into your project, not a continuous swath of parking or, uh, weedy foliage.
But if you measure from center of driveway to center of driveway, how is reducing the width of the driveway gonna make a difference? Isn't that how you measure, center to center?
Well, part, part of that, the intent there is to speak to the original intent around thirty-eight corridor, making a lush green kind of corridor, not a parking lot.
Well, I understand.
Uh, and, you know, with time, certain areas have become parking lots.
Mm-hmm.
Um, our present policy in regard to residential lots on thirty-eight is you get twenty foot wide swath through that twenty foot scenic corridor for your driveway. The rest of it either has to be maintained naturally, or you have to plan it with the landscaping standards there in the code. Um, and this speaks to the commission's direction to, uh, work towards reducing, uh, the size of the monster houses, uh, reducing congestion on thirty-eight, um, and just improving the individual people around thirty-eight, which is an has become an international designation. Uh, and we could make sure that going forward, we work towards that, to be honest now.
And that, and you know, if you cut, if we decide when we talk about chapter five to establish a maximum parking, that will help, too. So, um, those pieces kind of work together, and I think it's not really a big policy change, but it's probably gonna be an implementation change that is perceived as a policy change. That makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's it. If anything's really alarming in chapter six, let me know. Um, chapter seven, which is code enforcement, or, oh, see, you have, what you have is both, the, the right one and the wrong one. At least you didn't, I did it. So, code enforcement, new chapter seven, code enforcement has asked for some more tools to do their jobs, uh, effectively, and they're here, so I'm not going to, um, try to interpret what they've told me, but I did take a stab at trying to draft what they told me. And one of those things is, you know, better ability to issue immediate citations in cases where there's like immediate environmental damage that's irreversible, uh, cases where, um, you know, they've told somebody or been to the code over and over and over, you know, and the same person does the same thing, uh, repeatedly, and, um, we did establish a new penalty for restoration plans. This is something that kind of the, um, Coastal Dune Lake Advisory Board's been talking about quite a bit, and just the community in general's been talking about when someone clears the Coastal Dune Lake buffer. It, there's really no anything that happens to you for doing that presently. You just have to replan it, and you can replan it in such a way that you have a nice view, so it's totally worth it to do it. Um, uh, so this would allow us to assess fee, uh, development review fees like we had for, there's another section of the code where we have that ability now, if somebody goes in and clears without a permit. We actually used that not too long ago on, what was that road?
Rachel.
Rachel Road, where they went in and just cleared out front of those people's houses, um, we were able to use that clause to say you have to pay more of the review fee. And we did say that these restoration plans need to be prepared by an environmental professional. So there's a little bit more gotcha to that, um, if, if you do that, um, environmental area destruction.
You, um, one of those guys like to talk to that? Or explain what, or, or at least tell us they agree with it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, code enforcement, sorry. Uh, they can talk about the, the property ma- you wanna talk about the property maintenance section as well, and why you need that? 'Cause I think that's it, and I'm probably gonna go.
Is, is there anything that specifically says yard sale signs?
Yard sales?
Yard sales, is it just covered in a general language?
Those are temporary signs. They would be covered in the temporary sign language. I'm sure. You can have those, I think, temporarily.
Right, I just wonder if there's any specific language directed towards that.
No, but we can get some. We need some.
Probably just covered under the temporary signs.
Yeah, but you can't, you're not supposed to have any signs in the right of way. And you can have temporary signs under the conditions that are in here. So, we'll let, um, these guys come up and tell you what else is in here. If you're good with these chapters, if you wanna make motion to go ahead and move them out, that's great. If you wanna bring it back in September, I'll leave that up to you, too. Okay?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kurt Rose, Walton County Code Enforcement Officer. Um, some of the biggest changes that we wanted to make in the code enforcement chapter have to do with clarifying and bringing things into a more concise and simple notation. So a lot of the stuff that was, um, like, for instance, your property nuisance, junk and debris, all that kind of stuff that were scattered throughout the code, condensed into the code enforcement chapter. Um, this makes it easier for us to tell people, hey, look here, this is where you find it, the language is clear, you know, end of, kind of end of story at that point. Um, the other thing we wanted to bring into it is a more broader spec of what we can do on a property to make sure that these properties come into compliance and eliminate the loopholes that are in current code. Um, current code calls for if you have junk and debris on your property, put up a fence, and we're done, 'cause you can't see it from the public right of way. It doesn't help the neighbor, doesn't help the person, you know, that's got a few-story house behind her that can still look down, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, the new code kind of closes that loophole and just makes it, you know, that's a nuisance property, we can't have that. Um, one of the other things that we would like to implement in there is the ICC duty of maintenance. Um, it's updated every year, and it has kind of a more broad spectrum of what is considered maintenance on a property. Uh, most people think of it as a supplement to what we currently have. Not only does it give us more tools and a broader spectrum for things, it also allows us to look forward in the future for things that haven't happened yet. I know one thing that comes up a lot of times is we always hear about, you know, there's this house next door is so bad that, you know, it's harboring all these pests and rodents and infestations and et cetera. Currently, our code doesn't cover that necessarily. The ICC maintenance code does. It allows us to go in and say, hey, listen, you do have a problem, you need to correct it. Um, these are kind of the basic things. One of the other things that kind of can be a contention point at times has to do with the interior of the house. We get several calls from tenant landlord issues, you know. Um, I moved into this house, now they're not doing anything. We don't really get heavily involved in tenant landlord issues, that's normally a civil issue. However, if it becomes a life and safety issue, that's something we absolutely should step in on. If you walk into a house from the safe, you know, there's wiring exposed, and they have, you know, electricity powered to the house, and they're not doing anything about it, you know, that's something we need to step in and say, you need to fix it. It's instances like that, and then anything else that potentially come in the future, that is kind of what we're asking for in that regards. Other than that, the rest of it really just cleans up the code and makes things much more concise and easy to find. When we go out to any particular, uh, potential violation, the biggest thing people always go is, well, where's the code? Well, here, this is the code I'm citing. Okay, well, why is that in the development? It's had nothing to do with development, this is something else entire, you know. Those are the kind of things that we really cleaned up and made this a little tighter on. Do you have any specific questions on it, or?
Got a question on the, the authority to issue citations. Y'all can't issue citations today?
We can currently issue citations, however, they are extremely limited to a certain fee schedule. Um, and that fee schedule limits us on doing, especially right now, um, on development. We have no citationable ability on devel- on development, because there's no fee schedule for development. Right now, development infractions occur about thirty percent of the time for our code calls, so it's increasing dramatically, and it's something that we, in our opinion, we should be able to write a citation. We should be able to write a citation, in our own opinions, on anything in the code that's a violation.
That's created by ordinance? Our- That fee schedule or the citation schedule be created by ordinance, correct?
Correct. Um, we would ultimately like to see a, a very simplified fee schedule. If you violate any ordinance once, any ordinance or code once, it's a hundred dollar citation. Violated a second time, it's a hundred and fifty dollar citation. Violated a third time, it's a two hundred and fifty dollar citation. If you still haven't corrected or haven't, and you continue to do after that, we can then take it to, to the code enforcement board for further proceedings. Um, this gives us the ability to hit not just necessarily the property owners, but the violators themselves. Unlicensed contracting is a huge problem we have in the area, you know. What do we do when we go out to the contractor and we say, do you have your permit? No, I don't need a permit. We don't have a license, you don't have a permit, why are you here? And then the homeowner goes, well, they told me they had a license. Now the homeowner's on the hook for the entire, everything. And the contractor may just keep working, because they don't care. They're still gonna get paid by their person, you know, one way or the other. They don't like to stop when we tell them to stop, because of that. This would give us a pretty easy solution to say, I want you to stop, or I'll issue a citation.
Is that how, is what you just described how this works?
Yes.
So, so it'll be one hundred for the first one?
Well, and that's, that's if, right now, the only thing our, the current, um, code enforcement code is gives us the ability to write a citation on any ordinance, um, code, in the kind, that's all it is. The fee schedule is separated from that. I have yet to see the fee schedule and how that will work out. That's what we've asked for. If it comes that way, it comes that way, because the fee schedule will ultimately come separate, because that will be adjusted as time goes on. The ordinance, the code itself would remain the same, it's just the fees that would presumably increase over time.
And these are, this is all still complaint-driven?
That is correct.
Do y'all have, um, the ability to go on property if an owner refuses to allow you on it?
No, sir. That is private property. If we refuse to go on a property, we refuse to go on a property. We have no authority to go on the property.
What do you do in that case?
Um, more often times than not, we can, um, we gain permission to go on the property from that property owner. Um, we're pretty persuasive when it comes to that, and they allow us to see things. You do have the probably five percent that just will not allow us to go on the property. Um, in that case, we can be more creative with statements from neighbors, um, et cetera, depending on what it is. Every case is very individualized. Ultimately, if we can build enough evidence, um, to support it, I don't know that we've ever had to go this far, but I know, as Heather can attest, um, the only other way we could actually gain would be through a, yeah, civil warrant. Um, an administrative warrant to have access to it, but it would have to be pretty egregious for any judge to sign off on that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Ward, my name's Mike Lynch, also Walton County Code Enforcement. Uh, to give you a picture of the, what, well, the capability of this, what we're asking-
Stand in front of the microphone that way, if I can hear you.
Uh, to give you a better idea, uh, currently in the Four Mile Point area, Driftwood, uh, Road, there are four lots that are currently under construction. Uh, those four lots have all cleared up to the Bay Shore Line Protection Zone. Those companies have gone in there and stripped out every bit- Those companies have gone in there and stripped out every bit of vegetation, right up to the water line. And this has a negative effect on the environment because of erosion. If there's not a seawall present, then you've got slippage into the bay. In one of these cases, there are no permits at all. A company came in and this is a company I've dealt with before on West Harborview Road. I've told them that they can't clear within a particular area, too close to the water. This amendment, what we're asking, is going to allow us to write a citation to that operator. And I guarantee that we start implementing this and they know that they're gonna be on the hook for clearing when they're not supposed to or they don't have permits, they're gonna stop doing it. But right now, it's, it's an open field. Nobody is stopping these, these companies from doing this.
This will give you all the ability to do that?
Yes, sir.
I think you definitely need all the teeth you can get and enforce it. And I agree, if they, if they know you're going to be able to enforce it and they know it's gonna get in their wallets, I think you probably, that thirty percent of the calls you're talking about that accounts for, I think you probably reduce that.
And we use a lot of discretion in the way that we administer our job. There is some leeway, we try to be fair and equitable. Fines are not always the best way to proceed. We are always gonna try to get compliance. But in areas where something has to be dealt with now, citation is the best way to go. I'm retired law enforcement and citations work. You know, you can be nice to people all day long, but they're still gonna procrastinate and drag us through the, the code board process, which takes time, you know, for the code board and everybody to evolve. And a citation in general will take care of it right now.
One of, one of the biggest complaints you hear all over is, is the clearing and doing it on the way, you hear about, I mean, you hear it all the time. They, somebody went out there on the weekend and clear cut this lot without a perm. So, this will give y'all something to fix that bit with, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you do it retroactively?
That would be rather difficult to do. To at least speak to a citation, we would have to see it.
You'd have to see it.
Yeah. Once it's already done, I can't swear to what individual person did it. Or whether even it's the company that did it. And if someone, even if someone, a lot of times we get people, they'll send us pictures, say, look what we saw on the weekend, they did it. I don't know when that photo was taken, I don't know where that photo was taken, I don't know what grudge you have against that person. We really would have to be physically able to see that. Currently, we have a pretty good response time when it comes to new complaints. So, especially when high complaints like clearing stuff comes in, we usually respond within twenty-four hours. So, it's hard to get a whole lot cleared within that timeframe without getting caught unless you do it over the weekends or overnight. As the days get longer, sometimes that happens.
That's got a big bulldozer.
Yeah.
And white sand violations would be another immediate response.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions, John?
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we could, I think that, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I think they're gonna give it to the BCC.
Anybody have any objections? If I make a motion, it's awesome. Maybe I made it to talk.
Yep.
We do have one, I think Kristen briefly touched on, the new chapter eight is gonna contain the neighborhood plan section. That language is by and large exactly the same as it was at the end of chapter two. We just expect this to be a growing part of our code as we have more neighborhood plans. We're in the process of updating the inlet beach traditional neighborhood plan. So, that will be coming through the process and later this fall.
But those will all go into that chapter?
Yes, sir.
Right. Which makes a lot of sense.
Do we have to try to answer any other questions you might have?
No, I like it.
Thank you.
We got a motion?
We have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
What, what motion?
To approve all of them.
Yeah, moving forward. We have a motion, Danny. Any public comments on this? Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Randy Gardner. For clarity, brought to the, what my heard brought to, for the code enforcement, are we talking about assessing fines and is there a relationship to what I've heard or what's planned as it relates to stop work orders?
I didn't understand what you said, Randy.
Stop, meaning the, the code enforcement on some occasions will issue or has issued stop work orders.
I don't think it will.
And I, I just want to clarify that nothing that's been discussed or any changes-
There's not gonna stop that, I don't believe.
There's no modifications to a stop, to what rights, not rights, what authority they have to issue a stop work order.
I don't believe so, Mac.
Yes, sir, that portion is not changing. No, the things we're discussing would be enhancements to what we already have and that's a very valuable tool that we already have.
Yeah, we don't want to lose any authority. Any other comments or questions? CNN will post public comments, commissioners, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's gonna take about ten minutes.
See what they say when they come up.
Are we ready? It's all back to order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last legislative item we have to-
Real quick, before we start, do we have any sign up sheets? Anybody sign up to speak on any things?
I think there was a new person outside who may not know the break.
Right, I just was curious if we had any or not. Go ahead, Mac.
The last legislative item we have tonight is number three. This is the Bannerman Small Scale Amendment, number two thousand eighteen dash zero zero eight. It's a request to approve by ordinance. Vivian Shammle has reviewed this and I'll ask her to briefly introduce it.
Good evening. This is a small scale amendment request to amend the Walton County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map from residential preservation to conservation residential, two units per acre. This is on a two point eight three acre parcel. This does meet the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan and also allows for a logical development pattern in the area, the established neighborhood. Little history on this, it was, there was a previous small scale amendment applied for that was denied eventually by the Board of County Commissioners. And that request was to go from residential preservation to low density residential, which would have been four units per acre. This request now is for the conservation residential, two units per acre, which is consistent with the existing pattern of development, the subdivision that already exists. The CR two to one also does not allow for the clearing of the entire lots. And that is also a plus in that area. It is very consistent with the-
That's a preserve, what, sixty percent or something?
Yes. That is, unless you have any questions.
What's the-
They can clear no more than four.
The current use having the-
Residential preservation only allows for one single family home per lot of record. So, right now, they could only have one single family home on the two plus acres.
That's a really big lot there.
It is, and it just, it just wasn't, you know, parceled out when the rest of the subdivision, it's an unrecorded subdivision and that one was just left in a larger piece at that time.
So, the rest of the neighborhood around this is consistent with what they're asking for now?
Yes.
All right. Anybody else have any questions, the staff? Just be ready to come back if we need you.
Good evening. I'm Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering here representing the applicant. I think Vivian did a great job of kind of going through this. As she said, this did come before the board a couple of years ago, I think in two thousand fifteen, where there was a request to go to low density residential on this piece of property. A couple of problems with that was that it would have allowed up to eleven units on this two point eight acres, which is probably not compatible with what's out there now. And it also would have allowed, it didn't have any clearing limitations, so it would allow somebody to clear pretty much whatever they wanted to on the site. I think this request is much more reasonable. The request now, as Vivian said, is to go to conservation residential, which allows two units per acre and does have sixty percent preservation requirement. The five lots. This is the area, just to run through it real quick. This is sanctuary by the sea here, this is the area, this is the lot in question and this is the remainder of the subdivision here. If you look at kind of a larger overall map, this shows the future land uses that are around here.
The green area is state cars.
The green area is state land, correct, that's all conservation. All of this area over here is residential preservation, which makes sense because it was already parceled up into half acre lots, but on average, more or less. This just, I think this was anticipated to be done that way, but it just was never done and it was changed RP at the same time as the rest of this. This is traditional neighborhood here and an infill here and you can see higher density as you move further to the west. The Bannerman Beach subdivision itself, this kind of shows all the lots that are here. This is the two point eight acre parcel. All of the adjacent parcels are, this one's about point six, this is point five, this is point four eight. All of these parcels that are existing are all roughly half an acre, except for a couple here. These are an acre, a little over an acre a piece here and here, but still more compatible with the area. The concept for this, and this may be a little hard for you guys to see, but it's basically five lots to be laid out on this piece of property. That would be the maximum they could do. They would still have to keep sixty percent preservation here. These lots average about point five, six acres a piece, some of them are a little bigger. None of them, they're less than half an acre. And the original covets and restrictions actually call for half acre lot sizes out here.
How do they get an entrance into them?
Oh, there's Bannerman Beach Link right here. There's actually already a driveway that comes in off of this road and the property's a little used.
So, there's not another entrance coming off of thirty eight then?
No.
And these are half acre lots?
Half acre or larger, yes, nothing smaller than that. Really, as far as compatibility goes, this will fall in line right with everything that's in their current neighborhood. Everything else that's around them's developed at roughly four and a half or five units per acre, so it's less than those things. So, really is compatible with the area and I think considering the conservation requirements, the preservation requirements, it makes a lot of sense and it's very compatible what's out there. So, we happy to answer your questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Do they have any kind of deeded access to the beach or?
That, I don't know if there's part of that for the subdivision. I don't believe there is. I think it's just the lot itself.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Scott. I don't really have a sign up sheet. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? CNN will close public comments. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next section of the agenda is qualified judicial.
Anybody that's gonna be offering any testimony in these proceedings, if you'd please rise, raise your right hand so you can be sworn in. Anybody that plans to speak, you'll need to be sworn in on any of the upcoming items. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the first item on our agenda tonight is the hint and drive abandonment. It's a request to approve by resolution. It's been reviewed by Vivian Shammle. I'll ask her to briefly introduce it and then the applicant can present their case.
This is the hint and drive abandonment request. The request is to, requesting an abandonment of a patent easement for a more buildable area on approximately point seven acres. It's located at forty-seven Hinton Drive. This is a private request for an abandonment. And we do have some letters that were handed out to you, letters of concern, public comment. At this point, I would actually like to ask for Mac to give some, any additional comments from staff.
Commissioners, Planning Department typically does not take a position on abandonments. We leave that to certainly this recommending body and the Board of County Commissioners. We typically are commenting on the process for petitioning for abandonment. In this particular case, just to be clear, there's a government patent thirty-three foot wide easement that runs to the Minnehaw Water Line that the county has access rights on today. The applicant is requesting a portion of that to be abandoned and they're offering in return a, an easement for use of the sandy beach south of the two residential lots. The easement has been presented, doesn't look very favorable at this moment. We expect that that language will probably be amended at some point. But please be aware, the state has preempted our customary use ordinance. We are now spending large dollars to put that back in place. We have a public hearing scheduled for September eighth and this could potentially reinstate customary use throughout, you know, our twenty or so miles of sandy beach. But the applicant is here to present their case. It's their due process right to petition for abandonment. But please be aware, they're asking to abandon a portion of the public access to the beach. That is their request.
You said it's not, something about it's not favorable?
The terms of the easement have not been agreed to by the county, by county staff. So, I expected the terms of the easement for the sandy beach are somewhat in flux, subject to change, so.
Are we premature being here, asking this question?
This might be a premature request, but the applicant is here and they have the opportunity to make their case.
What parts, what parts of what they presented do you mean? What concerns you, I guess, as far as their proposal?
Well, there are a number of additional restrictions in the easement language that the property owner would ask the county to agree to.
So, wait a minute, the county has an easement now?
The county has a government patent easement that runs thirty-three feet wide all the way to the beach or to this-
How mu- how much are they reducing?
I think they're asking the county to abandon seven feet. Yeah, they're prepared to make a full preparation.
But just to be clear before, this gives us the right, or this gives the public the right to access the beach?
Public already has the right to access the beach. This diminishes the width of that access in return for granting some public use of what they consider to be a private beach.
What's left then to get on with?
I must admit, this is the first I've heard of anybody saying there are problems with the easement. The easement, the county's had the easement for a month. Nobody's told me there's any problem with the easement. I just ran through it and it's a pretty straightforward easement. There's no restrictions other than what you typically have in an easement, which is, you know, if you cause some kind of harm-
You're talking about the easement on the beachfront itself, correct?
And we're calling it an abandonment, it's really a swap. What this is, is right now, you have what amounts to a roadway easement that goes another. And there's nothing on it, that would be thirty feet, three feet wide, that goes from the road to the water. What we're suggesting is, because the only thing the county would do here- What we're suggesting is, because the only thing the county can do here is build water, is narrow the easement from thirty-three feet to sixteen. In exchange for narrowing it up here, right here, we will give the county an easement on all of this, which is the beach. So in other words, we're asking the county.
To reduce the easement up here
by thirty-eight hundred and forty-two square feet. In exchange, we're going to give the county seventy-six hundred and fifty-four square feet of sandy beach. Now, we all know the surface that's been going on down here for the last two months. The county needs more beach, we don't know what's going to happen with customary use, it's a hot topic. This is one, you don't have to buy it, you don't have to file over it, you get it. And all you're giving up is seventeen feet of something you're not going to use. Because all you're ever going to do here is have a boardwalk to go to the beach. You can't cut a road. You're not going to build a road that runs into the Gulf of Mexico, across this one lot. We're going to preserve sixteen feet of the existing thirty-three feet up here. So that you can have the boardwalk, and boardwalk, PTC standard boardwalk, I believe, will be eighteen? Eight, eighteen feet. So you've got plenty of room to put the boardwalk. If you then do this deal, this boardwalk, you go just down, the access just goes down the water, like all the other accesses that we have, unless customary use prevails, it's kind of useless. Whereas if you do what we're proposing, you now have the sandy beach for the public to use. Without any more litigation over it, without any, you know, having to go buy it. You know, the county's been going out buying these things for millions of dollars. We're giving it to you. We're giving you two to one square feet of easement. Now, if there's a problem with the language that we drafted, we're not locked on the beach access easement agreement. And Mac's comment is the first anyone said to me about any kind of problem with the language. But if there's language, it can be addressed and adjusted before it ever goes for the county commission. There's no significant restriction on this thing, it's a pretty much boilerplate easement. But Mr. Bennecke isn't trying to, you know, he's basically saying the public will have free use of the beach as if it was any other beach that the public has a right to use in South Walton County. And all we're asking you to do, by, we're forced, by the way, the, the ordinance reads, to call it a quote easement abandonment, but it's not. It's simply a realignment of where the easement is, at a gain of two to one for the county.
But that gain of two to one assumes the county is not going to prevail in the customary use fight, correct? Because if they, if they prevail, then that easement that you're talking about getting them on the beach really doesn't matter.
Well, you would get it a little bit if you prevail in customary use. Customary use would be somewhere right around here, and so you actually would get some beach that you would give even in customary use, because the beach goes further north than the customary use.
I understand that, but the, the, the majority of what you're talking about under customary use would already be accessible to the public, if, if the county prevailed.
If the county prevailed, but this is one area where you won't, you won't have to fight over it, you won't have to take that risk until this is given.
But the fight's going to be there whether you do this or not, correct?
Not for this particular piece.
I understand, but this is going to be.
Is it, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Or Mr. Kellenberger, can I ask him a question?
Just, let's just have you know this presentation first.
All right, just hold that call.
Yeah, hold on.
I mean, basically, we're saying that you, you also have, if you put it that way, the county's not going to build a road here.
Well, I don't think anyone would expect the county to go on a road there.
Well, this is a roadway rideaway, thirty-three feet.
I understand that.
So all you're doing is shrinking that roadway rideaway to sixteen foot wide pedestrian rideaway, where you would build a boardwalk. The boardwalk's like eighteen, we're making it sixteen, so you've got plenty of room to build a boardwalk around it.
I understand. Anybody has any questions of the applicant?
What's the size of that lot back there? This lot? No, the lot that he, that, yeah.
They're trying to expand.
I think it's like four hundred feet deep and eight, is it eight feet wide or less?
Including the easement, it's eighty-five feet wide.
Yeah, see, the problem is, it's eighty feet, so thirty-three foot wide. You really only have forty-seven feet.
But that's the result of a previous lot split, right?
Right, so it makes it more buildable. I mean, obviously, Mr. Bennecke would like to have more space to build because of the setback on the easement. That's why there's, there's no sure, there's no sure thing on customary use, but this is a sure thing.
Well, I understand that too, I just.
But he can build on that if he wanted to, if he wanted. He could build it extremely narrow.
What's the side set back there with the, next to that easement?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half, okay. So it's seven and a half feet on either side?
Right.
When was that lot split done?
March two thousand and fifteen.
So that's a very recent lot split.
Yes.
But he bought it knowing what it was, correct?
Yes, yes.
And he wants to build where they just tore that house down on Hinton? Okay.
The house was encroaching.
The house was encroaching on the easement?
On everything, when they did the lot split, the house was encroaching on everything, they had to tear it down. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, applicant? Do you have anything else right now, or you want to come back, if we have public comments?
I'll come back when we have public comments.
I don't have a sign up sheet, I do know that we received several letters today. We have them packaged up here, opposed to this, um, item. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on it? Okay, see, and then we will close public comments. Y'all have anything you'd like to add, anything further?
Whoa, 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 whoa. I'm going to ask.
Okay, that's right, well.
Chairman, Commissioner, I'm Brian Kellenberger, Westwood Beach Operations. My department builds and maintains the, uh, public beach accesses.
Can we put parking on this easement?
It'd be hard, we don't typically put parking at neighborhood beach accesses, it's thirty-three foot wide. You know, it's not to say that we could. One reason we, we would oppose an abandonment is that whenever we go to permit a, a boardwalk, doing walkover, FDP, uh, of course, is regulatory authority on that. And, uh, we like to have as much room as we can in order to make sure that we can get a adequate public beach access down, you know, across upland portion and then over the dome. You know, sixteen feet, seventeen feet, uh, would, may work, but thirty-three foot would be a, uh, way we could definitely build something that we would like. Our boardwalks are typically, um, uh, nominal six feet wide. Uh, but they do, uh, often have to have switchbacks if it's an ADA, ADA accessible boardwalk, they'll have switchbacks. So we would be opposed to any abandonment.
And, uh, but you could put like a bike rack?
Yes, sir, there's other amenities that can be put on there, uh, bike racks, uh, we often now put bump outs for, uh, rented showers, as we call them, benches for people to, uh, take shoes off and, uh, other stuff. So, you know, the boardwalk's having these bump outs on them. Uh, with the, uh, uh, changes that are happening to our beach, uh, with customary use, uh, vendors and such, we're looking at some other, uh, opportunities for, uh, beach equipment storage that would be in the upland portions of it, which would be further.
What type of beach equipment storage?
Well, right now, we allow, uh, vendors to store their beach equipment on the beach, uh, we have two types.
Why would beach vendors be allowed on that beach since it's private beach?
Uh, well, on the easement, we, we, there's, there's certain rules and regulations of how vendors are allowed to, to vend on beaches that we maintain. And so on that one right there, being a thirty-three foot easement, uh, they would be subject to paragraph D eight, which is twenty-two sixty D eight, which is the upland author, upland property authorization. So they would be subject to Mr. Bennecke's authorization on that. But in general, uh, equipment.
I'm pretty sure he's not going to give it if he doesn't get his easement.
Yeah, but that would be a question for Mr. Bennecke. But, uh, anyway, so back to my, my, my comment is, we're looking at opportunities for getting equipment, you know, either public or vendor equipment off the beach. Uh, right now, uh, you know, some equipment is stored on the beach, some equipment's removed on a daily basis.
Just to be clear, the tourist development council opposes any abandonment?
Yes, sir, and we were given the opportunity to, uh, make comment on it, and that's the comment we have.
Even if you're going to gain the usage of the beach down there, because right now, we don't know whether customary use is going to come back in or not. So you're banking on the fact that you're going to get it. If you don't, then all you've got is a thirty-three foot easement, then go down to the beach and walk east or west.
Uh, yes, sir, the, uh, terms of the, uh, agreement they have for what they describe as their beach easement they're going to offer in exchange has some, uh, terms that legal department's not in agreement with. I don't believe there's any, well, I think Heather May can speak to that. I think one of the big ones is, is that it does give them, reserve their, the right for them to have a vendor down there. So if they put a vendor down there, they effectively take back the beach.
Well, but then, you're saying that if y'all had control of it, you would allow vendors, so.
No, on thirty-three foot, we have an easement across a piece of property, that's still subject to a vendor. In other words, a vendor couldn't been there unless they had that agreement. So if, if they give us the portion of the beach, or.
No, I mean, the prop, the, the beach that he would give you all the use of there. Are you going to allow, if they, if he gives you that use, you're, would you put a vendor there, or you, because right now, they're saying that he would, he's, you're saying his language says that he's allowed to put one there?
Right, only, only he would be allowed to put one there.
Only he, but what I'm saying is, if you had the use of it, would you allow it? Because what I'm hearing is, either way, there's going to be a vendor there.
Uh, well, a vendor can only been there under Mr. Bennecke's authorization if it was a public easement. And, and in the language that he has put forth, it can only be his vendor.
Yeah, but I don't think it matters to the public whose vendor it is, because it's a vendor.
We'll take that out of.
Well, once again, once again, these are, these are questions that legal department needs to answer, and, and not beach operations.
Do y'all get paid by vendors?
We, uh, issue permits that the county receives a fee for.
Okay, just wondering what the, what the rationale is behind it. Yeah, okay, never mind.
The only effort.
That's all I have, yeah. Thank you.
You sure?
First of all, can the staff, the vendors be issued?
We'll take it out.
I am a little concerned here because before we even started this, there was a meeting in which that gentleman was in attendance, and Mac was in attendance, county attorney was in attendance, where we asked, is this a problem if we give you the beach? Jay Tusa was in attendance, and we were all told, no, we think that's a great idea. This is the first time I'm hearing of any concerns from anybody about this, which makes me really suspicious about what exactly is going on here. If you're concerned about a vendor, we'll take it out. The reality of it is, right now, is the upland property owner, even if you've got customary use on the property, the upland property owner can control vending. But if the county wants to have vending on the property, fine, we'll put that in the easement. He's not trying to retain the beach, he's offering to give you a beach. I find it just astonishing that I'm having to stand up here and actually argue to give the county a beach.
Uh, the, uh, Mr. Kellenberger.
We, we, we're closed public comments, yeah.
Mr. Kellenberger indicated clearly that TDC is opposed, and they're opposed because, uh, they need that thirty-three feet to get the boardwalk in. And Mr. Kellenberger is the expert on the beach. I think most of us are pretty confident that customary use is going to come back in, so that's not an issue. So, and Mr. Carpenter is on, uh, he's against, apparently legal's against it, so I'm moving, denying it.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion?
Yeah, I, wait a second, I'm not sure, first of all, I don't know that we're going to get customary use.
Nobody does.
That's right, nobody does. So why would we want to bank on the fact that we're not going to have the use of this beach, and we're going to have a thirty-three foot easement, which is not going to take, I've never seen a thirty-three foot easement where they took the whole thing. You've got a boardwalk that goes down to the beach. Ga- gaining access to the beach is the primary purpose of an access. But if you get down there and you can't do anything but walk, it doesn't do you as much good if you, unless you've got property down there you can actually use. I don't understand that.
But we've got thirty-three feet on the beach that we can use. So, I mean, this beach access is right, Mr. Kellenberger, there's twenty-five feet, right? Where we only had like twenty-five feet of the beach. Uh, unless we get customary use, we only got, I mean, aren't there some like twenty-five feet?
Public comments, we have closed. You can ask questions of staff, though, I believe. That's not a problem.
Which, which portion of the beach are you asking about?
Any, any, we have areas where there's like twenty-five feet.
Beach accesses, we have some, we have some as narrow as five feet. Other ones ten, twenty, and much larger than that.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'd just like to comment, because in this meeting that we had, that I described, where we specifically asked of this gentleman, and his boss, Jay Tusa, how wide, how many feet do you need to be able to fit a boardwalk in there? That's where the sixteen feet came from. We didn't arbitrarily pick it, we asked them. So I'm kind of shocked that all of a sudden tonight, I'm hearing this. Because there was a meeting, there were multiple meetings with lots of people to ask, what do you need? We want to give you the beach.
Well, let me, let me say this about that, and then maybe somebody else can hop in here. This seems premature for this evening, because what I'm hearing is that there was a meeting, and that there was no opposition. And then I've heard from Mr. Kellenberger on behalf of the TDC that there is opposition, and I don't think Mac was giving a ringing endorsement, and I haven't heard anything from legal. This seems awfully premature for such a big decision. And, and I'll tell you candidly, I've heard three people who should know, or two people who should know, that say they don't want it, and you're telling me that there was no problem at the very beginning, so I'm, I guess I'm a little confused. How did all this get here and?
You know, I'm a little confused too, as to exactly what's going on and who got talked to by whom. Because we had a meeting where all this was discussed and asked.
Right, but you would agree with me that it seems premature if there's this much discord between what you heard and what they're saying now, right?
Yeah, and I'm a little dismayed, for example, that legal had this easement agreement for a month, and this is the first time we've heard anything about a problem with it.
Well, I, I can tell you, just sitting here, that if you're this confused and these guys are all saying no, it seems like maybe y'all ought to have another meeting before we take a position on this, or at least give you another shot at it, once you've got an opportunity to kind of all get on the same page. Because what I'm hearing is two no's and maybe a, a no for legal. And I don't know if you want to.
I can speak to that, Chairman.
Yeah.
Um, our office has had communications with, um, Colleen Sacks, with Dunlap and Shipman, um, as recently as yesterday regarding the easement. And most of the terms of the easement, I believe from the discussion that Sydney had, and then some email communications, I think that, um, those issues are, are likely things that we'll be able to work out. So, you know, legal doesn't make any recommend, any policy recommendation on whether, you know, this board should make a recommendation for approval or to not, deny. Um, so, you know, Legal doesn't make any recommend, any policy recommendation on whether, you know, this board should make a recommendation for approval or to not, denial to the BCC, whatever is your pleasure. But if you feel that you wanna go forward with this and recommend approval, Legal can probably work out the easement language.
Yeah, I think our position is whatever. Is there something wrong with the easement, we're more than happy to change it. He's not trying to control vending on the beach. He's not trying to retain control over the beach, although even if customary use does get passed, he would have that right, but we'll give that a write-up. I'm, I'm not sure vending is an issue one way or the other.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shipman. Um, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, and candidly, on that point, I, I just, it feels very premature to make a decision on this without...
I, I think that's awful early myself, and, and, and to be honest with you, I'm not generally in favor of abandonments to begin with, especially on the beach.
Yeah.
Um, especially at this time with everything that's going on in the county, that, um, there's just so much uncertainty, I think it's premature to even consider it myself, but...
So we want, uh, do we wanna make a, um, a motion that they go back and work out their differences and come back then? Um, I know we have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor, that would have to be dealt with, and then you, if you wanna make a motion to table, you can do that, or you can make a motion to table.
Okay. You wanna vote on this one first?
So vote on the motion that stands, the motion that stands is to deny? Um, well, I think we can't, if we're gonna table it, we have to table it, not deny it.
Right.
Yeah, Ms., Ms. Attorney, what do you suggest?
I think that would be appropriate.
Just table the motion and table, I mean...
Well, it'd be a Danny probably if he's in the floor.
Withdraw the motion?
You could do a motion, I mean, withdraw your motion, and if the second withdraws, that would be sufficient as well, and then you can...
Doesn't the motion to table super, I mean, you...
We can...
I think they're, yeah.
A table would super...
I didn't bring my, uh, my, my, uh, rules of procedure, um, you know. We have our board policy, Mac, do you have that in front of your land development code?
I'm sorry.
Do you have the policies for the, uh, for the board in the front of your land development code?
Uh, I don't know. Land development code on the desk right now.
And I think the thing is, just from a law school standpoint, he's gonna have to withdraw his motion.
Neighborhood...
Well, the, the motion and the second would have to be withdrawn.
He's gonna have to withdraw it or we're gonna have to vote.
I'm not gonna withdraw them, because TDC says no, this, they have the neighbor, or the neighborhood says no.
If his vote fails, then there can be a vote on the table, and...
Right.
But that's the only way to go forward, I think.
Right.
And I, I'm the one...
We have a motion, we have to vote on the motions on the floor.
Okay.
If he's not willing to withdraw. So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to the motion, say no.
No.
Motion carries.
I'm sorry, what, what's the vote?
The motion was to deny, recommend denial.
And it's five to one?
Yep.
Great.
Six, six to one.
Six to one.
Thank you, Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is item number five, this is seller's tile. Uh, it's a request to approve a final order, it's been reviewed by Tim Brown, and I'll ask him to briefly introduce it.
Good evening, Tim Brown with Planning and Development. This is a major development order application requesting approval to develop a twenty thousand six hundred square foot commercial building on two point zero one acres with a future land use of VMU. It's located at twenty-eight hundred US Highway ninety-eight West, which is the Glass House to the east and D.R. Horton's Building to the west. It went to the design review board and was approved by them by a vote of four to zero at their July fifth meeting. It has a proportion of fair share requirement of nineteen thousand four hundred, I'm sorry, nineteen thousand three hundred forty dollars. Uh, there's some conditions concerning permitting and fire access. Uh, with that being said, unless other evidence presented to the contrary, the request, the project is consistent with the Conference of Plan and Land Development Code, and I'll answer the questions that...
Do you have any questions of staff on this one? Okay.
Thank you. We wanna hear from the engineer, right?
We want, yes, absolutely.
Hey, I'm John Feeney, I'm the engineer director, I work at Aldi Health Engineering, um, I'd be glad to answer any question you have. Um, the, as far as the fire issues, um, we spoke to Sammy and he said that everything looked good. Um, I know at the time, he was having trouble with the new citizen server.
No, that, that's, that's good to go.
Okay, we're good to go.
Good job.
Thanks.
You resolved that one quickly.
There you go.
It's an excellent presentation.
Does anybody else have any, any questions for the developers? Applicant? Thank you.
Is this a destiny?
Sir? Three ninety-three. This is three ninety-three.
Yeah, it's just east of three ninety-three.
Three ninety-three, ninety-eight.
There's south bay.
Does anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing that, we'll close public comments, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
A motion to be approved.
A, a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Last one.
You wanna take a fifteen minute break?
No.
We could be gone by then.
We got enough here without you, brother, if you gotta go.
You wanna be just recording myself now, or what?
Oh, that would be sad.
Yeah, listen, yeah. Mac?
Yes, sir, the next item on our agenda is item number six, this is the McDonald's remodel, uh, in Miramar. Uh, it's been reviewed by Tim Brown, he'll briefly introduce.
Yes, this is a major development or application submitted, um, by CPH, requesting approval to remodel the existing McDonald's structure to add a dual drive-through, make architectural improvements, and make ADA improvements on one point seven, one seven-nine acres with a future land use of Coastal Center. It's located at twelve eight thirty US Highway ninety-eight West in Miramar Beach. This went to the design revu, review board, easy for me to say. On July fifth, and they approved it by a vote of four to zero with one condition, that the lighting not exceed three thousand Kelvins. If you're not aware, Kelvins is the color, the spec, the color spectrum of the lighting. Uh, because of the Highway ninety-eight widening in Miramar Beach, there is no proportion of fair share requirement. Um, there's just two conditions, uh, that you can, that's identified in the staff report. And can I back up a second here? Have my previous staff report and the staff report presented?
Absolutely, they're accepted.
And Evan? Um, with that said, I'll entertain any questions, I'm trying to do it quickly and I'm failing miserably, but...
So this is just a revamp and they're gonna come into compliance with...
Yeah, these McDonald's all around the country are going to the dual drive-throughs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one thing, I may have failed, and I think I put it in there, when this McDonald's was approved, originally, drive-throughs were allowed in Coastal Center. Well, the code got amended to take that away, so for this, to, in order to have the dual drive-through, they needed a variance to the ZBA. Well, they received that, they got their variance approved, they're moving forward, but I think it's important that you know that, that they required a variance, they got it approved. Cause today, if you came in today, you can't have a drive-through in Coastal Center. But yes, all the McDonald's are going to this dual drive-through, and they wanted to do some exterior improvements to refresh the building and, and put in some ADA improvements as well. So they are changing the exterior of it, so it's gonna look a little different. Um, some of the signage that's on there now is gonna go away, it's not gonna go back up on the building, so it's actually gonna have less signage after the improvement than there is there currently.
Okay.
But it should look, it was built, I think, in ninety-nine, I believe, so it's probably due for a refra, you know, to be refreshed.
All right. Anybody have any questions, staff?
I think they sure need a dual drive-through, all of them, because I do, it kinda defeats the purpose of having fast food, you can't get it fast.
You can't get it fast.
I don't like the way...
All right.
It's like the dollar, man.
So is nobody here from the applicant? Do you wanna say anything?
Jason Tool with CPH here, representing McDonald's. Uh, not really, do you think they add, other than what Tim said? Uh, like he said, the, the building refresh would bring it in compliance with the senior corridor requirements as far as the exterior colors, things like that, signage, so, but no, I'm here for any questions other than that.
Anybody have any questions, applicant? Thank you, sir. Anybody in the public wish to comment on this? Seeing that, we'll close public comments, Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I believe we stand adjourned.
Okay.
Teddy, let's go ahead and do next one now.
Yeah, we go by fast if we do.
Yeah, 'cause we don't have nothing.
We don't have anybody.
We don't have anybody.